Do you know someone who's been an outstanding volunteer in the town of Bridgewater? Well, this is your chance to recognize them. The town of Bridgewater has put in a call for nominees for the Representative Volunteer Award, the Volunteer Family Award, and the Corporate Volunteer Award for 2022. Deadline for nominations Friday, March 18th. You can find nomination packages at bridgewater.ca/volunteer or by calling the Community Development Department, 902 543 2274. This is your chance to say thank you to those who've given back to Bridgewater.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at home outside of the town limits. But it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Conservatory of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends. I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother. His wife is like my sister. So, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum. But I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, boot camps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated. A place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger. And a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home. And there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Do you know someone who's been an outstanding volunteer in the town of Bridgewater? Well, this is your chance to recognize them. The town of Bridgewater has put in a call for nominees for the Representative Volunteer Award, the Volunteer Family Award, and the Corporate Volunteer Award for 2022. Deadline for nominations Friday, March 18th. You can find nomination packages at bridgewater.ca/volunteer or by calling the Community Development Department, 902 543 2274. This is your chance to say thank you to those who've given back to Bridgewater.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at home outside of the town limits. But it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Conservatory of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends. I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother. His wife is like my sister. So, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum. But I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People.
Thank you. I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. We are situated in Mi'kmaq, which is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And it is very much a privilege for us to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by Councillor Conklin, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Are there any announcements? Still, still quiet. Oh, Councillor Caldwell, yeah.
Wanted to mention a few events coming up. March 26th is the annual, 16th Annual CD Saturday at the Desprisade Museum. Very, very popular event. You can buy, sell, and trade organic seeds. There's keynote speakers, workshops, demos, a really popular event that's on March 26th. And I also wanted to mention that the library has lots of events going on for March break. Just a few of them are, there's healthy, no-bake cooking. There's raised salt tart. There's an East Coast Kitchen Party, chocolate making, making catapults, lots of fun stuff for kids, and there's stuff for adults too. So just wanted to mention that.
Fantastic. Thanks for sharing that. Councillor Fergier.
Yes, I just wanted to mention in, it is March break weekend. For youth and students, that bus rides are free for this week. So if transportation provided, and there's more activities. And just to tag along with Councillor Caldwell, there's other activities happening for skates and swims at the LC LC, so be sure to check those out.
Thank you. Councillor Thorburn.
Just one quick announcement. We had another meeting on the 10th, 8 o'clock in the morning, that sledge hockey is coming back to Bridgewater in December 2022, this December. Probably the first part of December. We're all excited about that because we were supposed to host it last year and couldn't, but this year we're all on board and just ramping up to get it done. So watch out for the news.
Excellent. Thank you. It's nice to see things slowly ramping up. The announcement last week that the Big X will be returning, I know that's big news. Even just a few weeks ago, it was kind of, well, what's going to happen this year? So they made that announcement. So stay tuned for more. Any other announcements from anyone? No? We'll go down to the minutes. The minutes from the last meeting are there. Are there any errors or omissions, anything? No? Have a motion to approve the minutes as circulated, please. Councillor Conklin, seconded by Councillor Thorburn, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none. The minutes have passed and we're down to planning items. 6.1, the application for development agreement for 233 Logan Road. I'll turn that over to staff.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'll just pull up my presentation here and I'll get started. All right, everybody can see that?
Yeah, we can see it.
Yeah. All right. So an application was submitted by Michelin North America for a development agreement to construct a 3,200 square meter manufacturing facility addition at 233 Logan Road. You can see the location here, and the property itself is located in the Bridgewater Business Park and is connected to King Street and St. Philip Street via Logan Road. Just for some context, here are some photos of the facilities. So that top photo is that southwest corner of the building, and the bottom picture is just a picture of the building, or the building, front of the building, the parking lot. Yeah. So that application is for a 3,200 square meter or 34,000 square foot manufacturing facility addition. The applicant intends to construct two separate additions, one 2,500 square meter or 27,000 square feet addition, and one 700 square meter or 7,500 square foot addition, totally in that 3,200 square meters. These additions will be located in that southwest corner of the current facilities near St. Philip Street, and they will measure approximately 7.7 meters or 25 feet from the property line at their closest point, and will be around 8.8 meters or 29 feet in height. So then, looking at the zoning and land use, the property is zoned as industrial M1 in the Land Use Bylaw. The property is designated as industrial in the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. This designation is what council envisions for the property in the future. And so the M1 zone, the existing zoning falls within this designation. The surrounding zoning is industrial M1, light industrial M2, single unit residential R1, two-unit residential R2, comprehensive residential R3, manufactured residential home R7, neighborhood commercial C7, special commercial C8, park P, and recreation rec. And the surrounding uses include a mix of single unit residential dwellings, industrial buildings, offices, and recreational facilities. Then looking at the site plan, so this is this proposed site plan of the building. The proposed additions are shown as the hashed areas identified by the red circles. The 700 square meter addition will be built along that western side of the existing facilities, and the larger 2,500 square meter addition will be built along the south side of those existing facilities. So the bottom of that diagram. As mentioned earlier, the proposed additions will be approximately 7.7 meters or 25 feet from the property line at their closest point. For comparison, the Land Use Bylaw requirement for front and side yards is four meters, 13 feet, and five meters, 16 feet respectively. So it adheres to that provision, and an access road is also proposed around the additions. Looking at the building elevations, here you can see the three different aspects of the two additions, so the west, south, and eastern elevations. And what we want to point out here is the proposed additions will measure approximately that 8.8 meters or 29 feet in height when complete, and that this will align with the existing building height. Also, for reference, there is no maximum building height in the industrial M1 zone. So the development agreement holds the property owner to specific things while leaving others to be regulated by the Land Use Bylaw. In this case, the development agreement will consider the permitted use, building characteristics, buffering, lighting, and parking and access. Additionally, considering sanitary sewer and water services as well as stormwater management, the property owner shall ensure that that sanitary sewer downstream of the development can accommodate any increased sewer flows, and that the site has adequate water supply for fire protection purposes. And this will be to the satisfaction of the town engineer prior to the issuance of their development permit. A stormwater management plan will also have to be submitted to the satisfaction of the town engineer. A public participation meeting was held in January. So prior to the meeting, a notification was sent out to all the properties within 100 feet of the property, and an ad was posted in the social break advertising the meeting. Four members of the public attended, and the main topics of discussion surrounded the environmental implications of the development, the potential for increased noise and traffic, and whether construction would disrupt traffic flow. Staff reviewed the town's policies while analyzing the development and creating the development agreement. So the current zone, the M1 zone, is meant to accommodate a wide range of industrial and commercial uses as a right. And the intent of that broader designation is to provide continued opportunities for a range of manufacturing and industrial land uses within Bridgewater. The MPS contains policy statements specific to development agreements, which focus on the compatibility of use, the compatibility of building, landscaping, the adequacy of infrastructure, emergency service, accessibility, after-transportation and parking, and potential environmental impacts. Upon review, the land use is compatible with those land uses adjacent to it because the surrounding uses are self-storage production as well as low-density residential abutting St. Philip Street. The additions are the same height, scale, and bulk as the existing building. No landscaping plan is required. However, the abutting zone requirements in the Land Use Bylaw will apply. These requirements are established to minimize potential land use conflicts and include setback standards and buffering requirements. The applicant shall also ensure that existing trees and vegetation are retained during construction. Regarding infrastructure, wastewater offsetting will have to be provided, and service drawings required before permit issuance. So then, looking at the industrial development policies were also analyzed as part of this process. Each of the following were analyzed when reviewing the application and creating the development agreement. So first, policy M1 was reviewed. This policy states that industrial development shall be concentrated within the Bridgewater Business Park to minimize the potential for land use conflicts in other areas of the community. The additions are to a pre-existing building in the Bridgewater Business Park, so the development adheres to this policy. Policy M8 was also reviewed. This policy states that additions greater than 2,323 meters squared or 25,000 feet to existing developments permitted as a right are required to undergo the development agreement process. The proposed additions exceed those figures and are therefore subject to a development agreement and policy MDA1. And so policy MDA1 is a development agreement policy specific to industrial development. It primarily concerns mitigating land use conflict and controls for things like abutting boundaries, emissions, health hazards, environmental impacts, infrastructure compatibility, and the implementation criteria. As far as these criteria are concerned, the development site minimally abuts a property zone, a single unit residential in the southeast corner. Because the two additions are proposed for the southwest corner, the impact of the abutting zone will be minimal. Nevertheless, the development will be subject to the abutting zone requirements laid out in the Land Use Bylaw. The proposed development is for a building addition to the existing facilities, so no additional emissions generation is anticipated. Likewise, no health hazards are anticipated. The environmental impact is considered in the engineer review. The development is compatible with the town master infrastructure plan, and the development is in accordance with the implementation criteria laid out in policy IM6. So the recommendation is for council to give first consideration to the development agreement for 233 Logan Road, and council schedule a public hearing during the regular meeting of council on April 11th, 2022. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Questions from council? Comments? Now, this is early days. This will come back a few times, so lots of times for input or clarification. So seeing none at this time, is someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Caldwell?
I move the council for the town of Bridgewater to give first consideration to the development agreement as contained in Appendix A of Document 21-182A for 233 Logan Road, and schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on April 11th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in council chambers at Town Hall.
All right. Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you for that, Eric. Great presentation. Down to correspondence for action. We have correspondence from Sean Patterson from the Western Cougars. He's the tournament chair, requesting sponsorship. There's a few options in there if council wishes to look at any of those options. Trust everyone's taking a look. What is the will of council? Is anyone prepared to throw in a recommendation there? We can discuss it. Or does anyone have any questions that need clarification? Deputy Mayor?
I just couldn't remember what the value of our sponsorship account is on a running basis, and what's left in it.
Yeah. We have, we budget $2,500, and third quarter year-to-date was around 250, I believe. So we have over 2,000 left.
Okay. Any thoughts on the level of sponsorship, if any, should add? Doesn't, certainly that's one of the options, to not sponsor? Or is someone prepared to start the ball rolling with a suggestion on what our level should be for something like this? Well, maybe I'll just throw out that I, my comfort level was at the silver sponsorship of $500. That's where I was feeling most comfortable. But that's just, that's just me. Councillor Caldwell?
I'm fine with silver sponsorship, and I did have a question. This is the first time on my term in council that this is, something like this has come up. So for sponsorships, it's simply we have a budget, and it comes to council, and we decide sort of on the spot? That's basically what happens for sponsorships?
Yeah, so we've had, we've had, trying to find a better path forward compared to in the past. So in the past, we didn't have a specific budget for items like these, and some of them, when they'd apply for a grant, the problem with the intake periods of the grant are that if the tournament doesn't fall within those intake periods, then they might have missed that opportunity. So then it began, began coming just from, as an unbudgeted, hey, in two weeks, we've got a tournament or something. So they are kind of last minute. They don't come very often. You're right. So I think this is the first time this term that we've had something come from the sponsorship. So they don't come very often, but that's why we have, we have a dedicated line item so that we can address it. Councillor Fergier, then Councillor Thorburn.
Yes. So I understand the games are being played on the South Shore. Not, but I know there's a lot of hotel bookings here in Bridgewater. So I know that the spin-off from the, from the families that stay here and will be great and benefit the whole South Shore. So I'm in favor of the 500.
Councillor Thorburn?
Yeah, I agree with Cheryl's comments. That was my comment. I think it does add a busy weekend in this town, and it's nice to see it out and people about. So I feel comfortable with that, too.
Thank you. Councillor Conklin?
Thank you. Yeah, and we do have a number of local kids that play on that team from the town here.
And I've just been reminded that we didn't have a lot of tournaments because we had COVID this entire council term. So there's that to Councillor Caldwell's point of, yeah, we haven't had this coming forward a lot because we've had a bunch of tournaments canceled. Okay, I'm hearing some support for the silver. Other thoughts? Councillor McDonald?
Do you want me to make a motion for the silver, and then we can decide if we're comfortable at that level?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, so I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater to approve a sponsorship of the Nova Scotia U13 AAA Hockey Provincials in the amount of $500 from the sponsorship account.
Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Conklin. All right, motions on the floor. Other further discussion?
Question?
Question's being called. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. 8.2 is a request to fly a flag at the community flagpole for Autism Acceptance Month. So they'd like to fly from April 1st to the 15th. So I guess this is, this is because it has So I guess this is this is because it hasn't come before. I guess it's part of our new policy, right? So if it was next year, the CEO, the C A O could approve this if council approves it tonight. Okay. Any questions on that? Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I will.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the application for flying the autism flag as per policy eighty-one flag flying on the designated flagpole from April one to fifteen, twenty twenty-two in honor of Autism Acceptance Month.
Seconded by Counsel Frazier. And I should I'd be remiss if I don't just complete what I said before is next year they still have to apply to the town. And that application just goes to the C A O. Just I didn't want anyone to think that's just a given. They still have to make application. Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, I was at walking Sam this morning. I see that flag is flying on the junior high school in Bridgewater this morning. So it's nice to see it out there. So I'm glad we're prepared to help him, too.
I had to make a comment, post this afternoon. I was disappointed to to receive an urgent message from a citizen over the weekend that someone had attached a flag to our community flagpole with some profanity linked to recent events. So just you know, it is a community flagpole. It's, you know, should be respected and treated as such. And I was very disappointed that, especially at a time we've got the Ukrainian flag flying there in support of of people that are, you know, under attack. It seemed a little disingenuous, I would say, to then post the, you know, fly a flag on the same pole in a park where children are with some profanity. It was hugely disappointing. So I hope to not see this repeated when the flag for autism acceptance month is there. So we have a mover and a secondor. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Eight point three is United Way, Lunenburg County, request for the extension of free Bridgewater Transit Program. I don't know if we have staff giving update. All right, to the C A O.
Okay, so this is a request for council to extend the program. The request is to extend the partnership to March thirty for the next fiscal year and beyond. But I suggest council considers it on an annual basis. We typically give out, give them two thousand passes. And just so that council's aware, twenty twenty is really not a year that we can measure, but twenty nineteen, we gave out fifteen hundred through this program of free passes. And in twenty twenty-one, it was one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight. The value of affairs, two dollars for adults, a dollar fifty for for child. And the request is to do this again this year. You can see that the correspondence notes the statistics for this year. There's one thousand three hundred and ninety passes distributed and one thousand one hundred and twenty redeemed. So that's a redemption rate of eighty point six, and it's they're primarily distributed through Salt Harbor.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions to the C A O on that? Well-used program for sure, as is transit well-used. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Frazier?
Yes. Make a motion, your worship, that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to prepare and execute a memorandum of understanding with the United Way of Lunenburg County for the provision of a free Bridgewater Transit Pass Program with similar terms as the M O U contained in Document twenty-two dash zero three nine.
Thank you. Can I have a seconder, please? Deputy Mayor, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Down to reports and recommendations. We have the recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee and Traffic Authority on the renaming of Cornwallis Street. Deputy Mayor, yes?
I'll need to declare a conflict on this one.
Yep.
I cannot remember how that works in virtual.
Does he have to exit the meeting or can he just shut? You can just shut off your your camera and your microphone and and come back when this matter's been completed. Thank you for declaring a conflict. And over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening, and I'm just going to share my screen and a presentation that we have or that I have tonight. Oh, we're here to talk about the renaming of Cornwallis Street. I trust everyone can see the presentation.
Yeah, we can kind of see your desktop with with it. I don't know if you can if you can fullscreen that.
I had it. Still?
Yep, got it now.
Good, thank you. Okay, renaming of Cornwallis Street. So just to take you back, a little background. July thirteenth, twenty twenty, an inquiry regarding renaming Cornwallis Street was received by council along with a petition. Same night, council passed a motion to task the Heritage Advisory Committee with reviewing the issue of renaming Cornwallis Street. June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, council approved the recommendation from the Heritage Advisory Committee to rename Cornwallis Street. Further, council directed that the naming of streets policy be amended prior to the selection of a new name. October twelfth, council approved revisions to the naming of streets and the naming of parks and trails policy. So from there, timeline of the name selection process. Phase one, an online survey was opened up to residents of Bridgewater to suggest a replacement name of Bridgewater for Cornwallis. The survey received thirty-three responses and six additional responses from directly from Cornwallis Street residents. Phase two outreach was done on behalf of the Heritage Advisory Committee by staff to solicit to solicit feedback on the shortlist of names from residents of Cornwallis Street, the Anti-Racism Task Force, the Town's Traffic Authority, the Town Civic Address Coordinator, and emergency first responders. And then February nine, at a Heritage Advisory Committee meeting, the committee passed a motion to recommend that Cornwallis Street be replaced by Crescent Street, or the name would be changed to Crescent Street. Also offered Trustee Street, Trustee after the tugboat, as an alternative option. A few of the main considerations. As mentioned, the Heritage Advisory Committee recommend that Cornwallis be renamed to Crescent and offer Trustee as an alternative. The recommendation of the Traffic Authority as follows. The indiscriminate location of the street name change should be corrected to avoid confusion for emergency first responders. And further, that Cornwallis be renamed to Crescent due to the name already existing in provincial municipal databases, making the work to complete the change that much easier. Civic address bylaw prevents discontinuities in civic address numbering, meaning if the existing Cornwallis and Crescent share a name, the Crescent portion would need to be renumbered. And so the existing situation on Crescent and Cornwallis Streets. So Cornwallis Street is numbered low to high, starting at King and up the hill to where it changes its name to to Crescent Street or where that name change happens. And that's just below the Woodland Gardens Trail entrance. And then Crescent Street properties are addressed low to high from that point to to Oak Street. So that's the existing situation. Option one, the recommended option. Replace Cornwallis Street with Crescent Street so that is one continuous street name from King Street to Oak Street. That would automatically trigger the renumbering of Crescent Street properties. Option two. Replace Cornwallis Street with Trustee Street. And replace Crescent Street with Trustee Street. So again, the goal of having one continuous street name from King to Oak Street being accomplished. Option three. Replace Cornwallis Street with Trustee Street. And leave Crescent Street alone. So that it's unaffected. So as part of the process's outreach program, a letter was sent to by regular mail to every property owner on Crescent Street and Cornwallis Street. Thirteen property owners on Crescent, fourteen property owners on Cornwallis. The letters were sent February twenty-fifth to give those property owners and residents opportunity to provide comment prior to this evening's decision. The letter gave a summary of the process to date, an explanation of the two names in question, including information specific to the recommended option where Cornwallis Street is renamed Crescent Street, and next steps. In response, staff have spoken to four residents, three of those from Crescent Street. And a letter was also received from a Crescent Street property owner. That letter states that renaming Crescent Street to anything other than Crescent, which has a deeper personal affiliation to this individual, is not acceptable because there is no substantial reason for the renaming and that it's not comparable to the Cornwallis situation. There are more residents affected than if only Cornwallis Street is renamed. And that Crescent Street residents were not given the same opportunity for input as the Cornwallis Street residents. So option two, where Crescent Street is renamed to Trustee Street, would be unfair. And the letter strongly encourages council to reject that option. There was mixed response regarding the the renumbering that would be specific to Crescent Street. One resident was relatively indifferent. Another cited their numbers being part of their identity as they've lived at that address for approximately thirty years. Generally speaking, property owners and residents understand why this is happening, why the options are presented as they've been. But in all cases, changing one's address is inconvenient at least and may be seen as a daunting task to some. So to reiterate the options, the recommended option is to approve the recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee to rename Cornwallis Street to Crescent Street and trigger the the consequent renumbering of existing Crescent Street properties. Also approve an unbudgeted expense to compensate residents of both streets for any reasonable costs associated with the renaming of the street or renumbering. Approve the, so option number two, approve the alternate recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee to rename Cornwallis Street to Trustee Street. Also approve the recommendation of the Traffic Authority to rename Crescent Street to Trustee Street with the consequent renumbering of the existing Crescent Street properties and with the unbudgeted expense to compensate Crescent Street and Cornwallis Street residents. Option number three, approve the alternate recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee to rename Cornwallis Street to Trustee Street, but ignore the recommendation of the Traffic Authority to also rename Crescent, leaving Crescent Street properties unaffected and approve unbudgeted financial costs to compensate Cornwallis Street residents. Option number four, defer the matter back to the Heritage Advisory Committee for further review. And so with that, I'll take questions, I guess.
Thank you, Nick. Questions from council? Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, Nick, thanks for the exit report. I am certainly in favor of naming that street according to your recommendation as Crescent Street. I think we have an opportunity here to compensate the residents on Crescent Street and Cornwallis Street prior to renaming it to the town to provide the provincial standard civic numbering, blue background, white letter reflective both sides when required and have them given to the residents so that they wouldn't be able to anything. And at least in Bridgewater, we can be proud. We have one street comparable to the provincial standard. And this is important that one street name be used, one street only. But Remo, Regional Emergency Major Organization, and the first responders have adapted to that blue and white. And but years ago, we knew where everybody lived. But as places grew and people changed, they don't know. And you don't know where you're getting an ambulance from when they're going. So I'd like to see the provincial standard fall out there. And I would only support that motion if those changes are made to have the blue background, white number reflective given to every residence on the new proposed item two.
Okay, if I may. Currently, the proposal in front of council would be to, you know, approve an unbudgeted expense. Staff's idea is to compensate the property owners, including providing the the money to purchase a new civic number sign. We could certainly encourage the blue. The civic address bylaw doesn't require property owners to use that blue sign with the white reflective lettering. You know, the civic address bylaw requires a high level of reflectivity and contrast as well as dictating where on on the the property the sign should be located and the size of the the lettering. But it does not require the the blue background with the white lettering. Staff could offer each property owner one of those signs, but based on the current bylaw, we wouldn't be able to require the use. The idea that the staff had here was to, you know, offer that. And we're talking maybe twenty-five dollars a sign or compensate the individuals, the property owners with with equivalent value. So I I'm just, I'm not sure we can we can require the use of the blue signs with the with the white lettering.
But part of that, Nick, is is that they're supposed to be, and I was on that committee, and actually I voted against that because I didn't use the the provincial standard. Contrasting colors clearly visible, but you can drive on any street in Bridgewater any night that you want and not see half the civic numbering. And when emergency arises and seconds count, you need to be clearly visible. And the only way you're going to get them clearly visible that the residents don't have any impact on whether they are or not is by having those numbers. And I know the civic numbering, I brought it up three times now to get it changed. And I think it eventually should be changed to go with most municipal units that have that. It's people's lives that we're putting in jeopardy. And and I think it it should be done personally.
So so Nick, is have you said that you've already made the, when you've talked to residents, you've already explained that we could do the blue and white? Or is it, are you suggesting that that's something, if this motion passes, that we could go out and say, listen, we can we can just get these numbers for you and drop off the blue and white?
Yeah, we haven't had that conversation. I I haven't had that conversation at all with with property owners. It hasn't come up. We haven't gotten to that that level of detail. But the plan that staff has would be to offer the blue and white. But again, you know, we would also, if they didn't want it, we would have the a second option where we would give a cash equivalent so that they could buy their own as long as it meets the the requirements of our civic address bylaw.
I'm with Counsel Thorburn. I'd I'd love to see us at least really present this as we'd really like to get to the blue and white, like we could take care of the ordering. It just makes it easier for them. Like, let's acknowledge that we're inconveniencing the people on this this street. And so if I think that would go a long way and it would make it easier for them. I'd be shocked if too many people didn't want to take us up on that. If we're gonna, we're gonna do the legwork. Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, sorry again. No, I I think it's a win-win situation for the residents on Cornwallis Street. We're going to provide the civic number for them. And they keep, actually, they keep the civic number, if I remember correctly on your presentation. And on Crescent Street, they get to keep their street name, and we'll provide them with new civic numbering. So I think we have an opportunity here to at least have the dialogue with the residents and encourage for their safety, the back background, white number. And go from there.
Thank you. Counsel McDonald?
Yeah, I certainly agree with Counsel Thorburn that if we're providing the the new civic number, then, you know, we should be providing the the one that that provides the most safety and visibility. Is there any reason that we have to offer the option of if you don't want what we're offering, then we'll give you cash? Because what's to say somebody doesn't take the cash and not put up a civic number?
Yeah, no, that's right. That's not, that was just the idea. That was the plan. So that's not set in stone.
But if the civic number in bylaw does require But if the Civic Numbering Bylaw does require a civic number, right? So if they, if we gave everyone, let's say, twenty-five dollars on the street, they didn't buy a new number, if they didn't put up a number, then they're violating the bylaw, right? So they do have to put, I see, I see what you're saying, Counselor McDonald, but they do have to put a number up, or they'd be in violation of the Civic Numbering Bylaw. Other comments or questions? Is someone prepared to make the first motion to get us through that part? Counselor Caldwell, you have a comment, or?
Yes, just like to say, I regret that the process has upset Cornwallis Street residents, and it will, it may inconvenience Crescent Street residents. You know, I feel bad about that, but ultimately, I feel the recommendation that we have before us is the best force of action. The Heritage Committee has spent a long time on this, and I ultimately feel this is the best resolution possible.
Thank you. Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor?
I can put it on, Your Worship, if you wish.
Thank you, Counselor Thorburn.
I would move that Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee and rename Cornwallis Street to Crescent Street and the resulting renumbering of existing Crescent Street civic addresses.
Thank you. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Conklin. I should note, in case you were wondering why Deputy Mayor Tanner has declared conflict of interest, he is a resident of Cornwallis Street, so he has a conflict of interest, and council members are required to declare it themselves. And so I appreciate him doing that, just in case someone was wondering why, why he stepped away. Further discussion, we have a motion on the floor.
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. We have a second item to deal with regarding this, and that is to approve an unbudgeted expense to compensate the Crescent Street and former Cornwallis Street residents, any reasonable costs associated with renaming and renumbering. Is someone prepared to make that motion?
Does that include us offering them to buy the blue, white-on-blue reflective numbers for every civic number? I think there's twenty-seven of them.
Yeah, so Nick, do you want to just clarify that?
Yeah, that is the plan, to offer to purchase one of the blue civic numberings, civic number signs with the white lettering. I guess I would question, then, are we offering the cash equivalent if they choose not to accept the blue sign? And yes, they do have to put up a sign, but are we offering cash if they do not choose to accept the blue sign?
I don't think it's unreasonable, just from my own comments, I don't think it's unreasonable to offer them the cash equivalent of the blue sign if they don't want the blue sign, as long as, to Counselor Thorburn's point, we are offering to take care of that for them, though. I think, you know, option A should be the blue and white reflective sign, and ideally that. But I understand that someone may want, as long as it meets the criteria, they may, I don't know, maybe they were going to get a light-up one that was better in their eyes. I don't know. So if we're offering to buy the twenty-five-dollar sign, I don't have any issues with offering twenty-five dollars, as long as we highly recommend the first one. Counselor Thorburn?
Yeah, Your Worship, and Nick, thanks again. But the way that I understand this bylaw, theoretically, the people on Cornwallis Street should already be following that bylaw. If they're not, then they're in contrasting conflict to the existing bylaw, if they're not clearly visible at night. And those civic numbers theoretically won't change, only the street will change. Is that correct, Nick?
Yes, that's correct. So Cornwallis Street residents will keep their numbers, and Crescent Street residents would have new numbers.
But we will encourage Cornwallis Street residents to have the new blue and white numbers.
We can also offer the blue and white to the Cornwallis Street residents if they don't already have them.
Okay, so then I would be prepared to make the second motion, so that I have clarity.
Thank you.
And I would move that Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve them on an unbudgeted expense to compensate Crescent Street, formerly Cornwallis Street residents, for any reasonable cost associated with renaming and renumbering.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselors Caldwell. Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Just as Deputy Mayor Tanner comes back, I think I just want to, I do want to thank the residents, echo what Counselor Caldwell was saying. This is an inconvenience, and I know this is an inconvenience that nobody on that street asked for. And so I appreciate that, you know, this is a bit of a pain. But it's not just change for the sake of change. The name Cornwallis is synonymous with the killing of many indigenous people. His name is synonymous with the killing of over two hundred in the Scottish Highlands. Many boarded and burned alive in their homes. Like, this is not a name that really, if you, through many different lenses, is not a name worth celebrating. And it's also a name that, you know, when people drive by that street, it's painful to them. And it's easy for people like me, you know, a white male, to drive by the street and go, it doesn't bother me, I don't get it. But that doesn't mean it doesn't bother other people. And so as we look towards the future, and we talk about reconciliation, we have to have some actions behind our words. It's easy to talk about it, and this is just one small step. The inconvenience of renumbering, the inconvenience of renaming your street, that will pass. But that first important step in reconciliation will hopefully take us to the next one and the next one, and be lasting. So again, I appreciate the residents of both streets going through this, so I thank you for that. This is important to do, and I applaud council's decision. Our next item is RFP twenty twenty-one dash seventeen Downtown Parking Study Professional Services Reward, Award, Reward. I see Mr. Davidson is with us.
It's kind of an award, I guess, or a reward. Yeah, it's a good afternoon or good evening. So the current fiscal, the current budget included the Downtown Parking Study project. The purpose is to ensure there's sufficient parking now and for the foreseeable future, to support both residential and commercial development along King Street. Just a little bit about the scope of work. Of course, it's to, the project's to assess both public and private parking in the downtown for current and future needs. The area that I'm speaking to really is bordered by, we'll say, Victoria to Maple, King to Pleasant in that area. They also, as part of the scope of work, was to review the impacts of removing South Parkade, look at feasibility to remove North Parkade, look at any strategies for the loss or reorganization of parking. Those would come with concepts and costs, of course, and to include or consider active transportation and accessibility needs. Also with the scope of work is two provisional items. One is, a tongue twister for me, is a parking pricing implementation plan. Really, that is to look at our strategy for customers to pay, and look at using methods of payment to possibly mitigate or offset some of the parking issues downtown. The second provisional item is to look at our town hall parking lot, because we are looking at, we do have a number of developments in and around the town hall, and requests to use the parking lot to help with their parking needs. So we did issue the RFP in January, enclosed it with four submissions received, one of which was deemed noncompliant because of the lack of pricing submitted. Staff reviewed the three other proposals. Their average scores are listed there in the table. The proposal with the highest score is Harborside Engineering Group. The project budget is forty thousand dollars, and if staff are recommending the award of the study as well as the provisional item associated with the town hall parking lot review, the net, on a net HST basis, is about forty-four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents that would be committed. There would be an over-budget expense of about five thousand dollars, which would be funded from the projected operational surplus. Staff see no reason not to award the Downtown Parking Study itself. However, council could elect not to proceed with the town hall parking lot review. However, that may impact the proposed private developments in the vicinity of the town hall. So staff recommend that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater award the Downtown Parking Study, RFP twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, including the provisionalism of Town Hall Parking Lot Review to Harborside Engineering Group, for a total price of forty-three thousand sixty dollars plus HST, or a net value of forty-four thousand nine hundred and five and fifty-five cents net HST, with a budget exceedance to be funded from operational surplus. The parking pricing implementation plan would be referred to future budget deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
It's the one that Matt has trouble pronouncing, perhaps, the parking pricing implementation plan. Can you just expand on that a bit, what that is?
Yeah, during the development of the RFP, I believe if Nick is still here, he may be able to comment a little bit too, or help me with this one. It was noted that through the downtown, downtown study, that the consultant at the time, I think that was two thousand thirteen, they reviewed the, suggested the review of the, how we pay or the fee structure for parking. I believe before, we had a, I guess, a levy for all parking there, and we switched to a user-pay kiosk system. And really, what was noted in some of the research leading up to the development of the RFP is that people with similar issues really used how they structured the fees themselves to mitigate some of the parking. So, you know, the short-term parking may be more expensive, long-term, maybe to encourage people to park and stay and walk from a little bit farther, maybe a little cheaper. Also, maybe reviewing what the levy system that you had in before, or anything else I'm not thinking of right now. But it was really to look at all those options as one way to combat the, I guess, the first, the parking issue that we may or may not have downtown. Hopefully, I explained that sufficiently enough.
I guess my question, I don't know if it's to you, Matt, or to the CAO. I just, I'm looking at the timeline, so budget was passed eleven months ago, and we're just awarding the RFP now. And I can't, can't help but think that costs went up with the delay. So is it the reason why it was so late?
It was primarily workloads in terms of all the other RFPs, and we're in construction season, so it got delayed in terms of getting it out, just not enough, not enough time to do it sooner. The cost are, we're just bid, so that is the cost, council's awarding that within the timeframe that I believe, Matt, the consultants would hold the pricing for. What we would do with this is, the money with, the cost would be carried over into the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, and the funding would come with it, that we would pull it over from reserve, so we wouldn't rate for it twice.
Okay. Other comments or questions? This is an important one to have done, so I'll be glad when it's done. Hearing none, is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater award RFP twenty twenty-one dash seventeen Downtown Parking Study, including the provisional item Town Hall Parking Lot Review to Harborside Engineering Group for a total price of forty-three thousand sixty dollars plus HST, forty-four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents net HST, with a budget exceedance to be funded from the operational surplus, and further that the parking prices, parking pricing implementation plan be referred to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget deliberations.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McDonald.
That was tricky, Matt. That was tricky.
It's going to be a test question. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Nine point three is Region Six Extended Producer Responsibility, EPR Feedback. My goodness, we have been waiting a long time for EPR. Am I turning this over to you? Sorry.
Waiting for the queue. So the council reps on the Joint Services Board would have received this presentation last week from Stephanie Smith, and essentially, they're looking for feedback from municipal units, so feedback's due by April eleventh. So on the agenda, you have the Region Six coordinators' feedback on behalf of the Region Six Board, and I believe that's been submitted, and they forward that to municipal units, so that municipal units were aware of that too. Essentially, from the presentation that the board got last week, and council's all aware of what the objectives of EPR are, which is essentially to reduce recyclable, the amount of packaging that manufacturers use, and certainly entice it to be recyclable material. They would be responsible for the cost of collection, processing, and marketing in order to collect the material, process it, and then send it to market. And that that's supposed to be the incentive to get them to reduce the amount of packaging and the type of packaging that they use. Municipalities are being suggested in the Region Six documentation you have. They're suggesting that there be a two-year implementation after the regulations and legislation is put into place. And some of the considerations that they have are that municipal units are asking that they have right of first refusal over their collection and processing, and the education piece of it, simply because municipalities have invested in waste management infrastructure. So if you think of just, why not settlement, for example, we have a building that we've invested in with a tip floor for receiving our recyclable waste, and then top-loading that and shipping that through a contract to Scotia Recycling. So we have assets, and if those, if the recycling gets diverted to another facility, then we have a stranded asset. So some municipal units have more invested with recycling lines and conveyor belts and sorting systems and all of that, that there's some concern that that investment that they made could be compromised if they didn't have the right of first refusal over those contracts. So they're asking for that, since the private sector will be responsible for paying for it and determining how it gets collected, processed, or marketed. They also have some concerns about the challenges in meeting the service levels. So pricing for the collection and processing will be set by contract. So if municipal units get the right of first refusal and bid on that, maintaining the cost would be important to municipal units, so there's some risk, concern over the risk that's involved in that as well. It was also noted that right now, it's residential waste that's being proposed that would go under this, but we do collect some small ICNI, our commercial waste, at the curb. So there's the question of what do we do with that? If we're limiting it to residential PPP waste, what do we do with the ICNI that we collect at the curb? Will that have to be picked up separately? So there's those questions that are out there, and they're the detail that needs to be worked out. And if you look at the report from Region Six and the responses to the survey questions, you'll see that those are kind of the themes that come up in those responses as well. So in terms of Town Council's response, your options are, of course, to provide your own response, or you may support the response that was submitted by Region Six as well, and just reinforce those comments that were made there.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions? So if you have questions, you can reach out to CAO, you can reach out to Counselor Thorburn, here's our rep on Region Six. Counselor Thorburn, you have your hand up.
Yeah, following what Tammy, information she gave you, a two-year term is what we're hoping for. Of course, the branch could have to get a little bit faster than us, but Lurinburg County would get about five hundred thousand dollars if this went through, and I think that And I think the town of Bridgewater shares roughly sixty-two thousand dollars that would go back into our coffers from the producers. And, and that money right now is just sitting there. It's collected, but it's not being given out. So once this gets implemented, all municipality units will get their share based on population. And province-wide, we're looking at sixteen million dollars. So it's a lot of money on the table. And I think in, in Region Six, we got twelve municipal units. And it's around one point six million distributed amongst them. So, you know, it's, it's pretty much based on formula for what we do for everything else. So we would get twelve point four percent or sixty-two thousand dollars starting now.
Oh, that's good information. Thank you. Other comments on that? I'm sure this will be discussed for quite a while as it rolls along. I'm sure it'll come back. Moving to nine point four, permit applications report for February twenty twenty-two. Wow. Here, here we go again. Busy, so that's, that's, I would encourage the public to look at, look at that. You know, we need more, we need more places to live in Bridgewater, so there's no question. And, you know, some of these we know will come and they'll be in the price point which is desperately needed. So I'm looking forward to seeing these move along in the process. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I unfortunately need a memory refresh. How does the hospital addition get factored into this and at what point?
In terms of the, is there application in this report? I'm not too sure.
I don't, I don't think it's in this report, but I, I just want, at what point does it get triggered? I can't remember.
Well, they actually don't need a building permit, right?
See, I don't think it would be on any of our reports. It would have been, it would have been in the past, right? It would have been at the early stages, the permitting stages, right? If it was.
For not for building, right? Because their province, they're exempt from applying for permits under the building code. So unless they just wanted to do it out of the kindness of their heart, they're probably not applying for a building permit. So it'd be probably more reflected in, in when we look at assessment values and stuff like that, right?
Other comments? It's a strong start. Nine point five is outdoor pool sponsorship. At a great, staff and I had a great discussion last week with, with the sponsors. I see Diana's here. I'll let, I'll let you, you explain that.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So with respect to item nine point five, the outdoor pool sponsorship, as the mayor mentioned, we sat down with our three primary sponsors of the outdoor pool, that being Oregans So Shore, the Bridgewater Barracuda Swim Team and the United Way of Lunenburg County. The five-year agreement that was in place since two thousand and sixteen expired in September twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Recognizing that the pool was closed in twenty twenty, so they did push one year that sponsorship forward. So that's why it ended in twenty-one. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the value of these generous contributions to the ongoing enjoyment of the outdoor pool. I am happy to report that Oregans So Shore, the Bridgewater Barracudas and the United Way of Lunenburg County will be returning as sponsors for the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three season and that each of these new agreements will be assessed on an annual basis rather than a multi-year commitment. Specifically for the purpose of this report and with respect to policy eighty-five, corporate sponsorship and naming rights, staff are seeking authorization from council of the new sponsorship and naming rights agreement from Oregans So Shore for the Bridgewater Outdoor Pool in the amount of ten thousand for the twenty-two, twenty-three season. The sponsorship contributions from the United Way and the Bridgewater Barracuda Swim Team are at a threshold of five K or less and therefore author, can be authorized by the CAO as per policy eighty-five. So the recommendation or the, the ask of council is that they approve the recommendation to accept the sponsorship offered, offer outlined in this report.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Council Caldwell?
I'd just like to say how pleased I am to see and community groups and nonprofits, businesses come together with the town. Amazing things can happen. I'm just so, so pleased by this.
Council McDonald, did, did he just take all the words out of his mouth?
Pretty much. I just wanted to acknowledge the generosity and the, the good spirit of community, kind of echoing, yeah.
I'll just add that what I, what I really love about this is they were excited to do this. So it wasn't, wasn't the, they didn't, they didn't do it out of a sense of obligation as much as they did it as a sense of community pride and they were, they were happy to do so. So I just, I really appreciate that. I think it speaks volumes. Any further discussion? Some prepared to make a motion? Council Caldwell?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater authorize the new sponsorship and naming rights offer from Oregans So Shore Subaru for the Bridgewater Outdoor Pool in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Thank you, seconded by Council Pogier. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Down to nine point six, Grants to Organizations. Is that you again?
Me again.
All right, over to you.
Okay, so with respect to item nine point five, Grants to Organizations, the committee received twelve applications for the March first intake, intake of the grants program for a total of sixty-three thousand one hundred and nine dollars in requests with a budget remaining of seventeen thousand. The committee recommended to support nine requests with partial support and three applications did not receive any funding. I'll quickly highlight the nine and just give their value. So the YMCA of Southwest Nova was awarded twenty-two seventy-five, twenty-two hundred and seventy-five. Vaughan Canada, twelve hundred and seventy-five. Bridgewater Curling Club, twenty-three hundred. So Shore Field Hosts, seventeen hundred and seventy-five. The Society of St Vincent de Paul, fifteen hundred and twenty-five. Lunenburg County Hikers, one thousand twenty-five. Flourish Fifty-Five Plus Health Activity Center, twenty-seven hundred and seventy-five. Bridgewater Figure Skating Club, twelve hundred and seventy-five and DMC Boxing at twenty-two seventy-five. I guess, you know, the recommendation or the, of the options that you have or do approve the recommendation, the grant amounts as reported. We're happy to take any questions if there are any from council.
I see Deputy Mayor has his hand up.
You know, just a quick comment and Diana certainly suggests that, you know, we're happy to answer any questions council may have on this. But this is a very tricky one to walk through. It took a lot of time to sort of assemble different costs and variations and so on, based on the volume of applications, the volume of dollars being requested and the limited funds we had. And I think it's safe to say as well, and Council Conklin will probably chime in, that you know, the YMCA of Lunenburg County with the youth center on King Street, I think council really needs to make a decision on the longevity of that grant year after year after year and, and whether it's something that we believe is a town we support and make it a dedicated line item. And I know we've had this discussion before, but certainly comes back year after year after year and, you know, is it a service that we as a town want to support ongoing for the long term, so.
Yeah, it's been, I think it's been over a decade with that discussion for sure. Council Caldwell?
I think that Council Tanner just stole my thunder. I was just wondering, I was just wondering if we are going to review the practice of awarding operating grants.
CAO?
Yeah, yeah. It is something that Jessica and I talked about that I think last week or the week before and we'd probably, we'd have to come back to council with what would be the criteria and what would, how, what would the process look like? For example, you may want to see their financial statements to ensure that the needs there or you can justify giving the funds. And the other thing to kind of note is that it would still be a grant. It would just be in a different part of your budget because there's only certain ways you can give money to organizations. You're buying something or you're providing a grant or there's a contract for services, that type of thing. So we can come back to council with what, what would be those ongoing annual operating grants that council would wish to consider? What's the criteria and what's the process to get on there and reevaluate them? Whether it's every year, every three years, like with, with profit tax exemptions for nonprofits, I believe it's every three years that you review and they reapply and they show their financial statements, that type of thing. So we probably want to follow a similar type process. But we'll bring that back.
Other comments or questions? I just want to thank the committee. I know it's not easy to go through, get lots of requests and all of them, I'm sure are important, so appreciate that. Seeing no other questions, is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Conklin?
Thank you, your worship. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee and award grants for the March first, two thousand twenty-two intake period as follows. Two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to YMCA of Southwest Nova Scotia. One thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to VON Canada Nova Scotia Branch Lunenburg Site. Two thousand three hundred dollars to Bridgewater Curling Club. One thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to South Shore Field Host Society. One thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to Society of St Vincent de Paul. One thousand twenty-five dollars to Lunenburg County Hikers. Two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to Flourish Fifty-Five Plus Healthy Activity Center. One thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to Bridgewater Figure Skating Club and two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to DMC Boxing.
Thank you. Do I have a second or? Lots of people, Council Caldwell, I saw your hand first. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Diana, for those.
Thank you. See you.
And just on cue, we see Leon is here. We have our next item nine point seven is Update Climate Reporting Activities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Nice to see you all. I'm joined this evening by one of our new staff members, Haruka Awiyama, who is our policy analyst and she and I co-authored this report for you. So what this is about is that the town of Bridgewater has been actively reporting or, or communicating its climate activities, climate and sustainability activities since two thousand and fourteen. And because we've generally been fairly advanced in our solutions-driven work here, whether it's Energize Bridgewater or our Municipal Climate Change Action Plan and our other work, we've generally been saying yes to participating in a number of different municipal reporting systems. So this report provides you with a little bit of an update on, on where we're at with some of those and provides a bit of a sense of what's going forward for your information. And we're certainly happy to answer any questions or, you know, hear your feedback on those. Just very briefly, I'll just say a few things about some of the systems. So the first system that we joined is called the Partners for Climate Protection Program. Council directed staff to enroll the town in the program in two thousand and fourteen. We currently have achieved four out of five milestones in the program under what's called the corporate stream and three out of five milestones in the community stream. It's, it's a very popular program. Many Canadian municipalities are actually enrolled in it and it's, it's, it's been fairly successful. We have an opportunity this year to update our status and, and we think that we may be able to achieve a few more milestones because of the Energize Bridgewater work that's, that's currently happening. So that one is, is, is in process and, and you know, is, is being reported on. The other major one is the Carbon Disclosure Project or CDP, which town council provided direction to enroll the town in, in two thousand and eighteen. And this is really a major international reporting system. In fact, many of the, the big cities around the world participate in CDP. Interestingly, only Bridgewater and Halifax participate in reporting to CDP in Nova Scotia. So it's not widely adopted in Canada, but definitely leading communities that are involved in, in climate activities are participating in it. There is a mitigation score and an adaptation score. So mitigation is about greenhouse gas emissions reduction. Adaptation is about, you know, strengthening our infrastructure to withstand more extreme weather and so on. And we continue to rank above the North American and globe, sorry. In two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, we scored above the North American and global averages in that, in that system. And then our, our score has declined in the last year or two for, for a variety of reasons. We think that we can improve our adaptation score by correcting an unfortunate error that was discovered in our, in our report. And we would be able to improve our mitigation score by doing another what's called Community Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory. Our inventory is actually outdated by their standards and, and the general expectation is that municipalities refresh those every few years, but it's, it's not been a priority for us. So that's not something that we've been investing time and energy and even though we've been doing programming related to energy and, and climate. The, the last one that I will talk about in any detail is the Cities Race to Zero Campaign. This is just a reminder that town council in October of two thousand and twenty-one enrolled the town in this national push for climate action and that will involve setting new targets for greenhouse gas emissions reductions for the community as a whole. And that work is being incorporated into the staff work plan in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. So that, that is, is going to be happening as, as part of what we do. So something will be coming back to council on that. The nice thing is that the Race to Zero Campaign is actually completely tied in with the Carbon Disclosure Project or CDP. So by reporting to one, we effectively report to both. In fact, even Partners for Climate Protection is beginning to incorporate its reporting into the same system. So everything's kind of converging, which, which is nice because it reduces the amount of time we would need to spend on these activities. There are two other programs indicated here. There is the Municipal Indicators and Sustainability Initiatives Report by the International Institute for Sustainable Development, which we are not currently using. And the Quest Canada Smart Energy Community Scorecard Project, which we participated in as a founding community and, but are not, are not participating in right now because our focus is on the other reporting systems. So just in the discussion there, you'll see that there is a work plan coming together in particular to continue with our, our CDP reporting and to set new targets for greenhouse gas emissions reductions, a two thousand and thirty target and a two thousand and fifty target. So that will be coming back to council. There is a note here that, you know, redoing the community-wide emissions inventory, which, which can be a little bit of an involved process, is not in our current work plan. So if, if, if council felt differently about that, you know, we would need to identify some resources for putting into that. We are also looking for some community partnerships that may be able to have some of that achieved for us by, by a community partner. So we're exploring options for that. I think that I will leave it at, at that. And again, my, my, the offer is just, does council have any questions about this report for information or any feedback on the way that we're using these reporting systems going forward?
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Thanks. Leon, so what would be an example of community-wide emissions inventory? Like what are we talking about and what's the effort to gather that either on a personnel account or a dollar-based value?
Yeah, thanks. So we undertook this initiative when we produced the Community Energy Yeah, thanks. So we undertook this initiative when we produced the Community Energy Investment Plan. We began working on it in 2016, completed it in 2017, council approved the plan in 2018. If we had to put a, you know, a rough estimate on the amount of time, if we kind of did it from scratch, you know, it's probably in the range of a $5,000 to $10,000 level of effort, just to, just to put a rough number on it. You know, you can probably achieve it with a summer intern. For example, you might be able to achieve it with a consulting firm, you know, spending some time on it. One of the challenges is that collecting the data can take time. We don't always have easy access to utility data, for example. So sometimes it's a bit of a waiting game to put out the ask for the information. Somebody has to make some decisions, and then eventually the information comes back. Sometimes if you're lucky, sometimes not. So it's not a, it's not a real cut and dry, you know, like one month start to finish kind of process, which makes it a little tricky to estimate. Yeah.
Counsel McDonald.
These reporting systems, I may be kind of misinterpreting what you're saying a little bit, but are these reporting systems that we've volunteered to be part of? Are they affecting priorities? It sounds like you're kind of, there's some work that needs to be done to increase our ratings in these, but maybe it wasn't work that you would have prioritized if it wasn't impacting our rating?
Yeah, so the, the systems are totally voluntary. What basically happens is we're already achieving way more than average community just by taking the effort to disclose our climate activities and our, you know, our plans and so on. What the, what the rating systems really are about are about kind of achieving excellence, right? And, and, and these, the system organizers want all municipalities, you know, to do their best when it comes to making public what the world is doing to combat climate change. The, 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 I guess you could say that for a small municipality that has, you know, limited, limited means in some ways, you know, we're doing great. Even at a, even our, even our C rating is actually, is actually really not bad when you compare it to most other jurisdictions. As I said, the adaptation rating will likely improve automatically because we've uncovered an error in our reporting that wasn't clear. And for the, for the mitigation side, it basically is a best practice to renew your inventory every so many years. And that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to show, okay, well, we'll bump your score down a little bit to give you an incentive to bump your score back up. There's no real repercussion of it, though. There's no, you know, nobody's withholding money from us. Nobody's, nobody's getting mad at us. What we did note in the report is that if we do an updated community inventory, we can probably create a more accurate 2030 and 2050 target because we'll be using whatever 2020 baseline information as opposed to 2011 baseline information, right? So we can make a more accurate emissions reduction plan. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. It does. Thank you.
I found that super helpful. Thank you. Other questions or comments? No? All right. Thank you, Leon. Thank you, Haruka, for giving us the update. All right. See you soon. Our next item is 9.8 Discussion Session Briefing Notes from March 7th. Those are there. Strongly encourage the public to, those are on the website. You can download those. There were a few topics: Motor Vehicle Act, Excessive Noise, Regulation Enforcement, Generations Act of Park Phasing Update, Municipal Planning Strategy Review, and Creation of Land Sales Policy. So that, those were all items discussed. And if you have questions, you can reach out to a counselor or staff member and they can walk you through that. 9.9, we're at the, almost at the end of this agenda, Infrastructure Canada Funding Streams.
Okay, so staff are, staff are getting ready to make applications for funding for some of the various projects that we have proposed in the 2223 capital budget. And when we make those funding applications, we often need support, demonstrated support from council for the applications, and that's done by way of motion. So what you have here are four, four applications of which we require a motion from council indicating that they approve the submission of the grant and thus the, the town's commitment for funding the project if the grant were awarded. So there's the Rural Transit Solutions Fund, the capital stream for bus stop improvements. We'd be applying for multiple years and we have a value of $200,000 on that. I would note that we had originally thought that we could do an ebus under that too because there was a five-year window. We've confirmed that you actually have to have the money spent within two years of award. So well before the timeframe that we would be looking to do that. And it doesn't look like that the feasibility study is going to, that we're undertaking right now is going to result in the need, or we're uncertain at the time of this application if we're going to need an additional bus. So it's $200,000 for bus stop improvements. The Active Transportation Planning Stream is for the design of an active transportation corridor along Silver's Hill with an estimated project value of $50,000, and that would be 100% funded. So council had asked that we resource funding and if we could find funding for 100% of the cost to do the design work at least, to see what could be done to provide for an active transportation corridor along Silver's Hill, then, then council would be amenable to do that. The Active Transportation Capital Stream is for an active transportation corridor along High Street, Phase 3 of 3 from Victoria to Empire, with an estimated cost of $940,000. So that's the active transportation component of upgrading that portion with sewer, water, roads, and we're looking at the AT component side of that. And then the Invest in Canada Infrastructure Fund for wastewater projects. And this would be from York to High Street with a approximate total project cost of 1.7 million. So this is kind of the backup to the DMF funding application that we made earlier. If we don't get that, we still want to get, get our, our name in the, in the hat for funding. And we did, we did talk to our, our contacts with Municipal Affairs who manage this fund because it is provincial and federal. They suggested that, like, we could have put $5 million worth of ask in there, and they had suggested that we wouldn't be getting enough, that they only have so much funding. And based on that, they would suggest that we probably anticipating we're from 1.5 to, like, if you kept your ask around there, you're probably more likely to get that. So that's why it's at 1.7. So that, those are the projects that we're proposing, and we're looking for council to pass motions in support of these applications.
Questions from council on those? Counsel Caldwell.
Mostly for clarity for the public, when you talk about active transportation corridors for Silver's Hill and High Street, are those sidewalks or is there something more involved?
It could be, it's like a three-meter-wide pedestrian way, so it could be sidewalk. It could be multi-use, like whether it's bike rolling, strolling, or, or walking type thing. So it's not your traditional smaller sidewalk that you might, you might see. It's got more width and more uses are possible on that. So High Street, it's, it's separate from the road because there's not enough room in there to add bike lanes and that type of thing. And within the road, so that's why it's separate.
Counsel Thorburn.
Yes, Tammy, I see you here, the green infrastructure stream for the wastewater projects from York to High Street. What street is that on? You're going from, is that on Dominion Street? Is that on Empire Street?
Empire.
Okay, because it doesn't say there.
It says it in the, in the description later on in the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I know we had just done York Street to High Street, not Dominion Street, so.
We're not doing it yet again. Although we did.
We did.
Yeah. Counsel Caldwell.
See, if the Silver's Hill project happened, would that be, would it, would the plan be to connect to the active transportation infrastructure being planned in the municipality of Lunenburg? That comes up to the top of the hill?
Yeah, my understanding is that they're bringing sidewalks into, into, to the town boundary, which would be by the Irving. So there would be an opportunity to look at that. At this point, it's mainly, transportation is leading that project because that's provincial infrastructure. But the, this point is just looking at how we would accommodate it along Silver's Hill. Within the scope, we could see what's possible in terms of connection. I'm not sure what side of the road the sidewalk's going on, so that, those are things that we have to find out.
Yeah, so that's a good question, though, Counsel Caldwell. So the one on Silver's Hill is the design. So it'd be very, very interesting to see what that design looks like. And I would anticipate whoever gets the tender for the design is going to be communicating with the province to figure out where there's, like, if there's a light at the top of Silver's Hill and they're going to bring a sidewalk, I would hope the sidewalk goes right to our sidewalk, not, you know, eight feet short or 50 feet short. And then how, you know, how does it look? So hopefully it all, left-hand, right-hand kind of thing. I say that with half of mine going, hmm, not that easy, right? Two groups don't always, so hopefully with TIR, we'll be contacting our staff to make sure that everything lines up.
And they have actually, Transportation actually has contacted our staff some time ago to let them know that they would be working on that intersection. So if there are any, you know, considerations or things we were looking at, it'd be good to kind of do it together.
Perfect. Perfect. Other questions or comments? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Thorburn, does he have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, but I do have a question because I brought that up at a council meeting a few months back about a safety issue, trying to find a walkway up that hill. It's very difficult, and I'm glad to see that the residents that I talked to, that something is going to be looked at because it's a very serious situation. So having said that, I can make the motion if it's okay.
Sure, yep.
That council approve the submission of the following grant applications. Rural Transit Solutions Fund Capital Stream for the Bus Stop Improvement Plan Implementation with a project value of $200,000. Active Transportation Planning Stream for the design of an active transportation corridor along Silver's Hill with an estimated project value of $50,000. Active Transportation Capital Stream for an active transportation corridor along High Street, Phase 3 of 3 from Victoria to Empire Streets at an estimated project cost of $940,000. And Investing in Canada Program Green Infrastructure Stream for the wastewater projects from York to High Street with an approximate total project cost of 1.7 million.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Pujer. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. That concludes our regularly scheduled council meeting. We have an in-camera meeting to discuss personnel under the Municipal Government Act 222C. And our next regularly scheduled town council meeting will be in person on the 28th of March. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn before we go to our next meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. You'll exit this meeting and
go back.
Get your new link for the next one. Thank you.